I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. I seen two people come in since uh last few minutes. If y'all intend to speak, you need to sign up on our speakers list. The name's not on the list, you won't be able to speak. Alright, then I'll open the meeting and as always, we start our meetings with uh.
Correct. Let us uh let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We just ask that you watch over us. Give us wisdom, dear Lord. We know ultimately that uh as we go into this public hearing on this land division, that this land uh is is yours. It's always been.
You gotta have, speak up. Nobody can hear you back here.
We're um we're just good stewards. We're just here as stewards of the land. We just ask that you be with us, protect us. Uh give us wisdom as we um we hear the public comments and uh let us make good decisions that ultimately are beneficial for the community. All these things we ask. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Uh pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chick or group.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For a forum, Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes, here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Ms. Bechtel.
Here.
And Mr. Turman.
Here.
We have a forum.
Planning Commission, check yours.
Yes, um Ms. Bechtel.
Here.
Mr. Grimsley.
Here.
Mr. Telling.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
And Ms. Bun.
Here.
And a forum.
Next, we will have the approval of our agenda. The floor is open for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Alright, on a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
Ms. Bechtel.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
And Mr. Turman.
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll open our joint public hearing for the land division ordinance, uh any other venue deemed necessary. And Steve, I'll hear you do our introduction.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turman. We were gonna have a joint discussion.
Right, yes, right.
Okay. I think um Ms. Turman probably has the um before.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about the car.
No, that's alright. Do you want me to go into the podium?
You wanna spin it?
You have four minutes, Carla.
Yay!
She was like what?
We start it. Alright, um this evening, I just wanna give you a quick run through um of the subdivision ordinance, um work that is in the state and um on the new proposed land division ordinance. So this is um it is repeated from February, um but. I'm just giving an overview of the timeline for this work. Uh we started in two thousand nineteen. The board appointed a subdivision committee um to to create more streamlined subdivision ordinance. And of course, twenty twenty, we had a COVID, so the work was halted. Um twenty one, twenty two, we was they resumed the uh work and presented a new draft ordinance to the planning commission. And twenty three, um the planning commission held a public hearing in October of twenty twenty three and recommended the new ordinance to the board. And twenty twenty four, twenty five, the board held workshops, made changes to the proposed ordinance, and scheduled a public hearing, which was held in February of this year. And based on public input, um the board met again, made change, made some changes, and scheduled this pub- uh public hearing with the planning commission. The um why a new ordinance, um the current ordinance is difficult um to interpret, not really interpret, but for the public. To to really navigate and understand what is allowed. Um the the proposed new land division ordinance is meant to make um divisions with a few new parcels easier and um also to limit the number of lots that you can um create on any new road. Based on long-running frustrations by residents over the years, um some of the highlighted um changes for the ordinance is that pre-perking is no longer required. You know, health department approval is required um for plat approval. That is um for private individual wells. The survey of the residual parcel is no lon- will no longer be required in most cases. Um only the um parcel to be divided off would have to be um surveyed. And as long as a surveyor can certify that the remainder meets the ordinance, then it does not have to be surveyed. In the past, we have not allowed easements for private wastewater uh system. So for drain fields, if they're shared, um we have not allowed easements for that when a property is subdivided. Those will now be allowed, proposed. And rather than being deeper than wide, uh lots will now have to meet a minimum depth. Whatever the minimum width required for the lot is how what the minimum depth will be. Reduced lot sizes um will be available if a private centralized water system and/or private centralized wastewater system is planned. A townhouse divisions will be allowed on a private centralized um water system. Divisions will be allowed on a approved private division road. And then per uh per legislative change in the code, the planning commission will no longer review any plats that will all fall to the agent. Any plat that is served by a private individual water system will be limited to ten lots, and that's per plat. Um that includes the residual lot. Any plat that is served by a private centralized water system is also limited to ten lots, um and that is also including the residual lots. Other features are a um a private division road, which we have not allowed in the past, um will be able to serve not more than ten new lots, including the residual lot per intersection with a public road. Um and that is um each private division road that has a connection to a public road will have a maximum of ten lots. If you have a private division road that does not con- uh connect to a A V dot maintained road, um you don't get additional lots for that. Any plat on an existing public road is limited to ten new lots, including the residual lots. That is not a maximum of um maximum number of lots on an existing public road. That's just the maximum number of divisions you can do at a time. And then a new public road that um is created after the adoption of this ordinance cannot serve um directly serve more than ten new lots, including the residual. During this process, um we have heard several misconceptions um in the public that we have tried to um address and just support the our case with facts, what the facts actually is of the ordinance. Um one of the misconceptions is is that we want to make it as easy as possible to develop high-density um and multifamily housing. And that uh we're gonna allow large subdivisions on private roads and driveways. Um in reality, um the current subdivision ordinance allows an unlimited number of one-acre lots on a new public road. The what has been proposed is that for a new public road, that would mean it be raised the limit from one acre to two acre minimum, and it would be a maximum of ten lots on that new public road. The current ordinance also um requires state-maintained road frontage for lots, with the exception of family subdivisions and um twenty-five-plus acre subdivisions. The new proposed ordinance would allow divisions on a private division road that is built to standards set by the ordinance. Um for an existing private road to be um considered a private division road, it would have to meet the standards set by the ordinance. And the number of lots allowed on a private division road is again limited to ten lots for each uh private division road that has a connection to a state-maintained road. And another um misconception, and we have heard this one for a long time, is that we have already proved small um narrow lots on long-level road um and have allowed homes to be situated sideways to fit more than one house on a lot. Um in reality, the um the lots in question. Um, in reality, the, um, the lots in question were created in nineteen ninety-three, which were under the nineteen ninety-one, um, subdivision ordinance, which allowed a minimum of one acre lots. Um, our ordinance, the current ordinance or the proposed ordinance, um, controls how structures are placed on the lot. And, um, just a reminder, since we don't have zoning, multiple houses can be placed on, um, a lot, as long as the health department will approve it. And it doesn't have to be subdivided to do so. Um, one other misconception is that there is a minimum, uh, that we have a minimum lot size of five acres and that we are lowering that to two and a half acres. Um, we do not have currently or propose a five acre minimum, um, nor a two and a half acre lot minimum. It's been said that the county will allow subdivision lots to be less than an acre. The county currently allows lots less than an acre if there's public water and/or public sewer, um, available. The proposed ordinance would allow those same, um, reduced acreages with public water and sewer, but also if a private centralized water or, and/or a private centralized wastewater system is built. Just so, some examples of what, um, our current minimum lot sizes are and what the proposed lot sizes are is for, um, no, if there's no public water and sewer, two acres. No public water and sewer in the new ordinance is two acres. Um, no public water and sewer, but a new public road in the current ordinance is one acre. Um, in the proposed ordinance, that has been changed to two acres. With, um, if a division has public water or sewer, it's a half an acre and it will remain the same proposed to be. With public water and sewer, currently, it's point two six acres. Uh, what is proposed is point two five acres, um, just makes it easier math-wise. Um, and of with, currently with private centralized water or sewer, the minimum, um, is two acres. You don't get reduced lot sizes. What is being proposed is that if you have one or the other, it would be half an acre. If you have both private centralized water and private centralized wastewater, it'd be point two five acres. And those are in line with the public water and the public sewer lot sizes. So for that portion, do I have any, any questions from the planning commission or the board?
Thank you.
Um, I would like to, um, say, um, I provided with you some alternative language for, um, private centralized water and private centralized wastewater requirements. This, um, after receiving comments at planning commission, um, couple of planning commission meetings, um, Ladina, I did speak with someone at the, at the health department. And, um, based on that, should the board choose to allow an engineer to design the well, um, for private cen- this is private centralized water only, um, to design the well and, um, the depth, the gallons per minute. And then you all in these land division ordinance can say that the number of lots you're gonna get from that well depends on how many gallons per minute that well produces. If you could, if the, um, planning, or if the board sets a three gallon a minute per lot minimum, then it would have to meet that minimum under the subdivision ordinance, not the health department. The health department is going to approve it, um, but they're gonna give us, um, a, a letter on a report that says this is the yield from that well, um, including, um, water supply and storage. And then the county would make that decision on the number of lots that could be done. And that's only if they're asking for reduced lot sizes. If they're not asking for reduced lot sizes, then, um, the county doesn't ask. We, we don't have anything to do with their private centralized well, um, or wastewater, um, systems. But you all can set, um, a minimum su- water supply and storage. They don't, like I said, the health department doesn't oppose those limits, but they will provide us with the information of what the well actually does and then we can make a decision based on what our subdivision ordinance sets.
Question real quick. So on the, uh, if they're asking for the, um, smaller lot size, meaning that if they're wanting to put into play the quarter acre, right?
Or half acre.
Or half acre. But if they were wanting to be at an acre or higher, then we, we would not have to.
No, anything under two acres, because two acres is our minimum. You have to.
Right. Currently.
Current.
Yeah.
And it's also proposed to be a minimum of two acres.
Correct.
Unless you have public water and sewer and/or sewer, or private centralized water and/or sewer. If you don't have those, then your minimum is still two acres.
Right. But are you talking about if, if, if somebody's wanting to do the private? Lost my seat there. But if somebody's wanting to do the private wastewater and private centralized water, right?
Right.
If they want to be at the quarter acres, that would be.
If they want to be at the quarter acre, then they have, then they will have to, um, as proposed, they will have to dig the well prior to plat, um, submittal, is what the current ordinance says. You know, you could change that to plat approval, um, but the well would have to be dug. And that would allow the health department to tell us what the yield is so that we could determine the number of lots that could be attached to that.
Yeah, on the, uh, determination, is that the planning commission or subdivision agent or the board?
That would be the subdivision agent, because you all, if you all put in the ordinance, say they have to have three gallons a minute per lot, um, and it only comes down to a, a gallon and a half per lot, then it would not meet our subdivision ordinance regulations.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes.
What's the purpose between or be- behind having a three hundred and twenty-five foot, or three hundred and twenty-foot minimum well depth?
The, um, that number came from, uh, the, it's the average depth of the, um, PSA wells. And i- if Ladina wants to speak to that.
Yeah, Richard, uh, you know the water study that we completed and, uh, one of the things that it highlighted, um, is that the more fractures that a well hits, the less vulnerable it is to drought and also the higher the yield typically because of multiple fractures. And so, uh, building off of that study, that was the idea on this, is to, um, have depth, um, to kind of help with both yield and, and, uh, withstanding drought, drought periods. It builds in storage too, as well as increases your likelihood of hitting fractures. And similar to what Carla was describing for the board on, if you wanna set a minimum, um, gallons per minute, you all could set, uh, a minimum, as, as you've proposed to do, the three hundred and twenty-foot depth. That's not something the health department will enforce. But again, if somebody wants the reduced lot sizes, then that's something the county can enforce, um, if you want to. Uh, does that help?
Yeah, it just seems a little bit counterproductive to me, because you could hit a lot of water before then. But also there are other means of storage besides the well itself. And it kind of bumps that up.
There, there is some risk to doing really shallow wells, you know, fifty and seventy-five foot wells. You can hit real gushers then, but then when the, when a drought comes along, you, you might lose it all. So, uh, I can't speak to, uh, there's no perfect number that I know of, but I'd just tell you the reasoning behind the number that's, that's there.
We take y'all's questions. May, we don't take questions.
About the noise, the sound, there's a lot of, my ears are pretty young in relationship to a lot of people in this room, and I can barely hear what's being said. Is there any speaker coming back this way?
You can go in the other room and you can hear it on the TV there, if you have our back here.
There's more speaker in there than in here.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming from the television screen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, um, any other questions?
Yeah, I know. That's only for recording now, because I'll speak this really bad. Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will open up for a public comment. Is the intent that all persons attending the meeting of the board regardless of handicap and conditions shall have an opportunity to participate. If any person present requires any special assistance, please let the board know in order that arrangements can be made. Speakers are limited to four minutes. Sharing or giving away unused time is not permitted. The board does not respond to questions or comments made by the speakers during the public commentary. Also remember, you know, we're supposed to be neighbors and friends and whatever. So it's be kind to each other. I will not put up with any disrespect being showed to each other. You know, different people has different ideas. We need to accept that. And, you know, that's, that's what it's all about. And I will not put up with any name-calling or disrespect showed to each other. So with that, um.
Mr. Eli Schwartz-Grawla from Locust Grove.
Can I get an extra minute for going first? Good evening all. My name's Eli Schwartz-Grawla from, from the Locust Grove District. I want to thank all those that have been working on the project for years. My concerns and comments are not meant to be disrespectful for all the work that has been done. In the spring when I spoke, I got into many reasons why I feel this ordinance takes the development of our small community in the wrong direction. Some of these are concerns for our limited water supply and how more wells and wells that are larger and deeper wells will, with, for central water systems may affect their neighbors. Already maxed infrastructure like the traffic light, emergency services of all kinds, solid waste, roads and more. The quality of life in the place we call home in all regards, bigger does not necessarily equal better. Today, although I still have these same concerns, I feel like they have been voiced, if not fully heard. I heard many more voices in the spring asking for limited development, more thought and planning, more care for the things we hold dear about our home county. I don't see those voices reflected in the changes that have been made. Instead, I see a bit of a slap in the face, intentional or not. Lot sizes proposed to shrink from two acres to one acre in the spring now have been shrunk again to half an acre with shared water or sewer. The same has happened with shared water and sewer. Those were proposed to shrink from two acres to half an acre in the spring. Now they're slated to be a quarter of an acre. Why? I can't get into all the details of what's wrong with the draft. There isn't time here. But I feel it might be better to leave that to others and ask instead, what is our vision for the future of Floyd? I have talked to two of the five board of supervisor members yesterday. They say their vision is more in line with what I heard most people asking for in the spring. Not a hundred acre tract of land turned into four hundred homes, which this could allow. No townhomes, not townhomes and high-density housing all over the county, but only close within the PSA district or a shorter distance from, a short distance from that. Not increasing the population when our infrastructure can't take the pressure. I know there are good reasons for making many changes to the ordinance. Thank you all for doing that work. What I don't understand is why we would make the changes that allow levels of development that we are not ready for and as a community aren't clear we want. I ask you all to think what the goal is in allowing smaller lot sizes. More affordable housing has been stated as a core reason for reducing lot sizes. If that truly is the goal, I ask you, what does affordable housing look like? Can it be built with the current per, per square foot building costs? Does the land cost really change that formula much? Do we really think a hundred acre tract of land cut into three hundred and fifty to four hundred lots will provide cheaper lots than the two acre ones that can be purchased now? These divisions, if created, will cost substantial money. Those costs will be passed on to the end buyer. When those lots sell, are we likely to have more affordable lots for low-income housing? Or are we more likely to have expensive homes on smaller parcels of land? That developer who sees the potential of Floyd for making a bit more money will not look to create affordable housing. They will be looking to make the most money they can. So I ask you to think, if we want affordable housing, is this the way to get it? Or does affordable housing in this day and age mean that it needs to be done by someone who cares about Floyd? With government guidance, and yes, I'm sorry to say, likely subsidy. I propose you consider not reducing our minimum lot size at all as a whole. If more development is needed beyond what can happen within the reach of the PSA, consider setting a distance from the stoplight or some other targeted limit to the growth area. Let's see how that goes over time. Does the community like it? Can the infrastructure grow to handle the pressure? Do we want a larger area to be opened up to this kind of growth? Please, don't open the whole county up at once to the same rules as the PSA zone, with the only guardrail being the cost to build. This will not create a future we want to see and live in together. It will not create a unique place we love and want to live our lives for generations to come. Sorry, y'all.
Just a thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me with you or not? Alright, on your end.
Just coming up.
Her, her name is pronounced Gwela.
Gwela, thank you.
Yard Gwala.
From Locust Grove.
My name is Gwela Yard Gwala and I'm seven years old. I love our beautiful county. I love the rolling green field and the beautiful woodlands. I love drinking a fresh, clean glass of water and looking up the stars at night. And I hope my children and grandchildren can do the same. Thank you.
Next up, Kate Glass from Little River District.
I don't want, I don't want to, but. My name is Kate. I'm members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, my name's Kate Glass. I'm in the Little River District. I, um, I used to enforce ordinances. I am in favor of updating the ordinance. I worked for Loudon County and of Floyd for a career with Loudon to enforce. Now, I'm popular ordinance about solid waste that people didn't know about, but. So I like the idea of us rewriting, amending this ordinance, updating it to meet the needs of the residents of Floyd County. And that's what I think we have to keep in mind, is the people who do live here and do love the land and do love that we have a lot of open land and green space. My concerns is just that you know what you are doing. You're opening a Pandora's box. I saw Loudon County go from a pretty small agricultural county to the fastest-growing county in the Commonwealth for years. They turned swamp lands wet, not, not licensed wetlands, but areas that were wet into subdivisions, because they needed to build and they weren't building affordable housing. So you just need to know what you're creating and you also need to be able to enforce it. Are you prepared to write this ordinance, have these limitations or restrictions, and be prepared to enforce it? And are you working for the benefit of the residents of the county? So I just, you know, I'm in favor of this. I'd like to see something that, that county residents agree with them. Like, we do need to remember that we all moved to Floyd because we all love the open space and the land. And I am personally glad to be back and out of that nest of traffic. And, uh, there are more dirt roads in Loudon County, I think, than in Floyd, but I don't know. So, but thank you. And it is, I do tell people, it's a land division ordinance. It's not a subdivision ordinance. I mean, land vision, so that subdivision has such a bad connotation, but I'm trying to set a way to make sure people's land is protected too. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Quinn Yard Gwala from Locust Grove.
My name is Quinn and I'm twelve years old. I have lived here in Floyd all my life, but I lo- and I love how unpop- unpopulated it is here. I love traveling to different places, but one thing I like about Floyd is how rural it is. When we drive along the road throughout Floyd, I
When we drive along the road throughout Floyd, I like to look out the car window. When I do, I see beautiful hills and rolling, beautiful fields and rolling hills. If subdivision becomes easier, then some of those fields will become housing complexes, complexes and gated communities. Is this ness- if this is necessary in Floyd, then it should happen in town or in close proximity to town, not all throughout the county. The water here is clean and good tasting. As more and more houses are built, the wells and springs will dry, may dry up and rivers and streams might become polluted. Even though most of us don't want that to happen, as housing density increases, the likelihood becomes greater. This past February, when there was a public hearing held about the proposed land division ordinance, the majority of the public asked you to keep the minimum lot size larger and not reduce it like you proposed. Instead of listening to the general public, in two instances, you reduced the lot sizes even more. Why was this decision made? Have you thought about how these changes will affect my generation? Do you intend Floyd to look like Christiansburg, Virginia in the coming years?
Thank you.
Next is it Yaro?
Yaro.
Yaro. Delaney Yard from Locust Grove.
Hello, uh my name is Yaro Delaney Yard. I'm registered in Locust Grove District, but I'm a land vendor in both Locust Grove and the Little River Districts. I've grown up in Floyd County my whole life, I've traveled a lot. The um Floyd is really beautiful and rare place with good water. Many of the changes in the newer ordinance, I don't have any problem with. I believe removal of a perk test will cause a lot of headache and extra cost for homeowners and headache for town office dealing with upset people. But my main concern with the smaller is the smaller lot sized division. I was here this spring, um the public hearing and many of us expressed lot uh a lot of concern about the ability to divide land into smaller parcels if put in a V dot ready road or whatever the other term for that is and centralized water and sewer. Since the meeting this spring, the only changes proposed are that the lot sizes were dropped in half for these types of development. Growth is inevitable and there is a need for more housing, but I believe that this type of development should be limited to the town of Floyd or the proximity of the town. This spring, many of those um that sit on the board of supervisors expressed that they not wish to see housing development replacing our beautiful farmlands like it has in so many places in the country. I'm inclined to believe all of you, however, the changes proposed don't really reflect that wish. I'm very concerned that drilling deep wells for this type of centralized water water will very negatively affect the surrounding wells that are already here and that we all rely on. I've heard it said that this type of development is very cost prohibitive and probably won't happen that much. I feel very strongly that um that is not going, that that's not going to stop large developers. It may stop our local community from developing their own property because it costs a lot. But in the same, it's the same costly enterprise here that it is everywhere else in the world that's being done all of the time all around us. And that cost will just be passed on to home homeowners driving the cost of of the property up. Um I feel that this this revision will be opening ourselves up for changes that would affect all of our lives for many generations to come. Forty years ago, land between downtown Christiansburg and Blacksburg was farmland. Look at what's happening in Reiner right now. Is this really what we want our county to look like? From what I understand, there is nothing other than money and appropriate roads stopping someone who is willing to put in centralized water and sewer from dividing the parcel ten ways and then turning around and dividing each of those parcels ten more ways with a minimum size being a quarter of an acre. I'm not looking to personally attack anyone, I have a lot of respect for all of you as people and I appreciate all you do. I want you to know how it appears from the outside and what I've heard said around town that between those of you who own large parcels of land and those of you who are in the real estate business, it's it appears as though there may be a conflict of interest driving some of these decisions. If you don't want it to appear this way, I strongly encourage you to to vote against this revision and place more restrictions on time between divisions as well as not allow for lot size to be smaller with centralized water and sewer outside of the town vicinity. I hope that we can all enjoy this beautiful county and good water to drink for many generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler McReynolds, Berks Fork District.
He's in the other room, so give him just a second.
Thank you.
Hi everyone, uh I'm Tyler McReynolds from Berks Fork uh District. Um my primary concern with everything uh that's being proposed is the parcel sizes for the central um water and sewer. Um I think that, you know, I I see, I've seen, you know, the comparison that not a lot's changing in some of the other areas, but when I look at this, I think of large subdivisions with a centralized well and a centralized septic system. Um a little bit about me is that I grew up outside of Richmond in a very rural community. Um and it was a very peaceful, tranquil place. Um my family's lived there for a couple generations now. The house that uh I grew up in uh is slowly being encroached on by a five hundred thousand dollar, seven hundred thousand dollar uh subdivision that for the house, uh each house subdivisions with very small parcels. Um I'm seeing strip malls, when I go back home, I see these strip malls that are encroaching, uh you know. Richmond's different than Floyd County, but I think a lot of poor decision making led to this encroachment and sort of shifted the uh the community into a way that I think a lot of people didn't want when they moved there. Um I think that that sprawl is something that I'm really scared of and I hate, would hate to see in Floyd. I moved here to get back to the the peaceful, tranquil uh place. Um and I would hate to see, I would hate to see us lose that. Um you know, I I hear a lot of, I I've heard that part of the intention here is more affordable housing and I'm all for affordable housing. I think that that is very important. Uh and I think it is a problem, it's a problem nationwide. Um and I don't know that we're going to solve that in Floyd County by making parcels smaller, if that's really the intention. Uh I think that this goes a lot deeper, I think it was mentioned that maybe some public-private partnership might be required there. Um I appreciate the effort, but I think that maybe we would need to think outside of the box a little. Um is just making parcels smaller going to solve the problem? Or do we as a community need to figure out another way in which we can create things like that? There's the new townhouses over um off Newman that Habitat put in. Um I think examples like that are how we're going to create affordable housing. I worry that driving parcel size smaller and smaller is just going to allow developers to come in out uh compete folks in the community trying to buy land, right? That five acre parcel that's currently seventy five thousand dollars, well, the developer can pay a lot more than seventy five thousand for it because they're going to turn it into multiple millions of dollars. So I think that those are my concerns, that's my primary concern. Um I want to make sure that we're thinking this through and that we're not opening up Pandora's box like was mentioned earlier because again, I grew up around it, I watched it happen and let's keep Floyd the special place that it is. Um and then lastly, I I do agree with some of the concerns about water table. It doesn't seem like we have a conclusive study there and to vote this forward without conclusive data just seems like a terrible idea. Um and then lastly, I do also have concerns about the optics of everyone here uh who maybe has a conflict of interest. I respect you all, Floyd County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Walker.
Make your introduction. This county is the broadest part of the Appalachian Plateau. It's somewhat unique and most of us know this because we work it. I think there's at least a half dozen, maybe a dozen farmers in this room. We understand the reality of water use, we understand it because if we run out of water, we have to make other provisions. The Racy Report does not reflect the actual conditions on the ground. If I went to a developer and told them that they were going to build a um a community with a with ten lots and it was going to cost ninety thousand dollars per three bedroom house to provide septic and water, they'd laugh me out of the room. I've been doing this for almost forty years. The reality of the three hundred twenty foot prescriptive requirement in your ordinance is that the well we have out here by H and V is deep enough to tap into mineral water which is rich in sulfur and iron. That mineral is called amphibolite, it's the same mineral we get out of the quarry. As you go deeper, you your risk of hitting non-potable water increases. Let's delete every single reference which is prescriptive from this ordinance. By the same token, if you look at the requirements for a V dot road, those are engineered structures. The sub base dictates the road and the carrying capacity, not the depth of gravel. If you put eight inches of of gravel on some pasture and drive across it, you'll probably lose your gravel and you'll have to bring more more rock in. If you engineer that substrate and you put geotextile and you compact it to a standard and you grade it for for moisture and for water movement, then you won't have those problems with that road. My point is, do not include anything of a prescriptive nature in this ordinance. The Code of Virginia fifteen two twenty two forty one mandatory provisions has been ignored by the committee that created this ordinance. This ordinance should be rejected. I also suggest that the the board convene a working group of professionals who understand the basis of how we work with state agencies, how we work with landowners, how we work with people within the within the community, in the development community, in the farming community and recognize that the reason that Lauren Yoder and Justin Coleman said we need to revise this ordinance is because we are in the midst of a crisis of housing. And it's right here and it has nothing to do with what I've heard so far and everything to do with the fact that I cannot take my fifteen acres, create a small community of two or three homes that I can either rent or sell and vest that with a mortgage. The way that this ordinance is created right now, it prohibits me from conducting my business. I don't understand why you conservatives would be so restrictive that you would not allow me to do with my land what my neighbors in Montgomery, in Carroll, in Patrick, even in Franklin are allowed to do. This restrictive ordinance create raises the cost of housing, raises the cost of land development and indeed raises the proportion of money that's going to realtors and developers. And I think that the criticisms are correct. The optics are miserable. You're creating an ordinance that's benefiting, it looks like it's drafted by surveyors and realtors, not by engineers and developers. Let's rethink this ordinance. Please reject the ordinance.
Thank you.
And lastly is Abby Bentley.
Little River? Just in the other. In the other. Can you repeat that last name?
Bentley?
Thank you.
Hello, thank you, boys, sorry.
No, thank you.
Okay. Hello and thank you for hosting a public hearing tonight. I am a Floyd County homeowner in the Little River District. And I'm going to echo a lot of the same concerns uh that came from the people that spoke before me, but I feel it's important to continue to stress some of the issues that we were all seeing with this. Um as a personal story, my husband and I relocated back to this region to be closer to family after seven years in western North Carolina. Um and we lived about thirty minutes west of Asheville in a town called Canton, it's a very small town. Um during those seven years, we watched numerous farms be subdivided into sizable subdivisions and these development projects um that crowd all these homes into small acreage did not make housing more affordable for citizens of the town, but instead attracted families from surrounding wealthier counties who saw them as a way to profit off smaller town economies. Um my husband and I, who were considering at the time buying a home in that region, uh when we first moved there, quickly watched that idea kind of fall apart due to the rising cost of living. Um so the result of these developments was ultimately the gentrification of the town of Canton and Waynesville that made it really challenging for families to stay in the area and it rose the cost of living. So I fear with the updated regulations that Floyd County could experience a similar rate of development that would diminish the charm of the area and ultimately increase the cost of living due to increased housing competition. Um the proposed idea of making private centralized water easier on small acreage plot setups, um error, sorry, it sets up the conditions for these subdivisions. So you stated that this earlier was a misconception, um but whether the intention is there or not, these regulations do create conditions for these larger divisions to be to be made. Um additionally, I would say, and I say this with respect but with real concern, that I am curious if the Board of Supervisors would speak to the conflict of interest that comes from working in real estate fields, many of whom own a significant acreage in this county. Um because in both cases, they could potentially benefit from these regulation changes. So as others have expressed, I just wonder what state safeguards are being considered within these changes to avoid overdevelopment that many small towns are facing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that I'll close the public comment period and uh I'll take a motion from the Planning Commission.
Tell me to do it.
Sure, um hold on.
Jim. Can I ask any of you on the Planning Commission, you have anything to say to us? I mean, I know you've given us, I know you've spent a lot of time.
We 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 stepping outside of our bounds right now.
Really?
You know. We we didn't make a provision for that right now.
There's um there's not a motion on the floor at this time for debate. Um under Roberts' rules, if if a motion is made and seconded and it is before the Planning Commission, then each commissioner um would have the opportunity to speak once and then a second time, once every other member has had the opportunity to speak. So so under Roberts' rules, each member of the commission would have a chance to speak on a motion if one is put before those.
And who puts that motion and to affect the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Yeah, I just wanted to specify that.
Yeah, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the land division ordinance only with the changes of removing the uh shared water system portions, removing the smaller lot sizes associated with any of that shared water systems. So remove the entirety of the shared water system and those provisions. And also, I would like to move forward with a larger lot size for across the board.
Point forward. I I think you.
With those, so the the ordinance with those changes.
So I I I clarify, your the motion is to recommend approval to the board
Okay. Right.
and supervisors. Um and you're recommending striking the provisions relating to shared water systems that reduce the lot sizes, but not on public.
Correct.
Public water and sewer.
Correct.
You're not, you're not suggesting of mending that in the closed ordinance.
No, to private shared.
Okay, and then you say a larger lot size, I think you you need to specify a a lot size for the motion.
I'll say five acres. I feel like um okay, and then I I know it's not time for discussion yet.
And when you say five acres, is that?
Five acre minimum parcel size.
To ac- across the board or for just when there's no public water and sewer?
Yes. For when there's no public water and sewer. So public water and sewer parcels, public water and or public sewer can stay as they are. But the private centralized water or private centralized sewer is what I'd like to remove.
Like family?
Family divisions are their own thing.
Not covered by your motion?
No. No.
Any, any discussion?
You're, do you wanna?
We need a second.
We have a second.
Do that for a second before the debate begins.
Right. Right. Do we have a, the motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Do a second, we can have discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, and at this time, um, I think we.
I, I motion that, um, this ordinance, um, goes back to the Planning Commission for more discussion for the board than we have. Um, I think there's a lot that needs to be made.
So that's a different motion.
Right.
Yeah.
We're discussing my motion.
Oh, my bad.
Correct.
So are you?
I'm learning the ropes.
You, you could, um, I think the cleanest way to address it would be to have discussion on the proposed motion and then vote.
Okay.
Um, you could make a motion, um, to amend her motion, but that gets confusing. So.
I can, I can amend my motion easier, a little bit.
Well, I I would suggest, why don't, why don't we open the floor for debate?
We'll leave it, I'll leave it here.
And that might give insights on what might be the, the, the commission, what changes the commission might like to make to the document.
I would like to see these changes in writing. Um, it feels pretty abstract to be putting recommendations out into the ether and I, I, I would like to see it written out. And therefore, it feels to me that bringing it back to the Planning Commission so that we can see proposed changes that are made tonight and then offer those changes to the board to then be presented to the public.
Mark?
Yeah. We've talked a lot about the, uh, two and we've discussed five and so kinda as a group, we had settled on two. But, uh, I think, uh, uh, maybe we do after the public input, maybe we do need to look back at the centralized and, and, uh, public water or centralized water and sewer. And then, uh, uh, some of the things that I've looked at, uh, on the private roads, uh, we took away any of the slope considerations and, and I'd have to agree that it, that, uh, different soils and different complexes, uh, uh, would dictate, uh, how good a road that we have for these, if we do offer, uh, the private roads, uh, because each individual case, uh, really should be engineered to those soils. So, so I would, I would agree, maybe we need to work on it some more.
Richard?
Um, I've been conflicted with this division ordinance. Um, there's a lot of catch-twenty-twos in it for me. And I'm from Chicago and so I've seen development before and it's one of the reasons I like this place. Um, so what I want to say is that, um, I was really appreciative of everybody that said something tonight had a very important integral point and I agree with those. And, um, I would like to see, um, probably, I think the best way to deal with this small lot division is to eliminate it, uh, which is what the motion is. Um, I think, uh, in the long run, it's gonna cause more problems than it's gonna solve. We've got this issue of preserving the water versus affordable housing, making smaller lots. You make the bigger lots and then the, the, the regular Floyd people can't afford them. You, you get in a bind and maybe none of that's our consideration, but it, it does pose a problem. So the only thing that, um, I would change in the motion, I think, is, um, instead of a five-acre lot, have a, a three-acre minimum. I think that would be something that we could work with. But appreciate all, everything everybody said here.
I personally have been on the path since twenty nineteen from our beginning meetings with Carla Ladina, Mike Massolini, reading ordinances from far and wide. Um, and I know we talked about all of the roads and width and depth and, um, at this time, I would be in agreement with Kalinda on removing the water and increasing to five acres. But personally, going back and looking at it completely individually on the roads and, um, just a complete reread again, I feel like I've been on that path of reread, rewrite. And so I would be in agreement with Kalinda on the motion, um, at this time and accept the land division ordinance as it is with the motion that's on the floor.
If I may, on my planning commission role, um, one of my biggest concerns has been the title purpose and general provisions of the land division ordinance. And some of our, our directive is to provide, to make possible the provision of public services in a safe, adequate and efficient manner. To assist in guiding growth that is beneficial for the entire county, protect against overcrowding of land and undue density of population in relation to the community facilities existing or available. Preserve agricultural and forestal lands as well as, as other lands of significance for the protection of the natural environment. Protect and preserve aesthetic, cultural and historic resources. Protect and preserve the natural resources of the county, including and not limited to water, soil, air and adequate light. Promote development patterns that are compatible with existing and planned public infrastructure and promote the efficient and economical use of public plans, public funds. Protect against loss of life, health or property from fire, flood, impounding, structural failure, panic, crime or other dangers. And one of my other dangers at the forefront is water, or the lack thereof if it's overused. Um, nowhere in our title purpose and general provisions does it mention affordable housing. And I think when we consider as a planning commission or Board of Supervisors in the land division ordinance, the cost of land, we've overstepped our title purpose and general provisions. I think affordable housing is not part of this. It's part of the comprehensive plan, but it's not in the intent title and general provisions, or title purp- purpose and general provisions of this subdivision ordinance directive.
So at this time, do we, with the motion and the second?
So each member is allowed to speak again if there are further comments or if, yes, Chair, you can just call a question and I'll put a vote.
Okay.
Repeating the motion. And repeating the motion.
Mr. Durbin will state it nicely for us.
I think the motion is to recommend the revised subdivision ordinance to the Board of Supervisors for adoption. Um, with the following modifications. To, um, strike the ability to have a reduced lot size on private centralized water and wastewater systems.
Just water. I just was wondering. If they wanna try to do a chair and sewer, have at it.
Well, it will have, it will have, it will have, well, it will have the same effect.
Right, it will.
Um, to, to re, to strike the, um, reduce, the ability of reduced, availability of reduced lot sizes on private centralized water systems. And impose a five-acre minimum lot size for, um, parcels not on, um, public water.
Correct.
The exception to family subdivision.
Right, except for family divisions.
Not part of the motion, yes, yeah, that's not touched by the motion.
I would like to take the vote on the motion.
Okay.
And we have the second by Richard. We don't need to.
This is uncool.
Right.
Ms. Bechtel?
Yes.
Mr. Telling?
Yes.
Mr. Grimsley?
No.
Mr. Sowers?
No.
Ms. Baum?
Yes.
So motion passes.
And so at this time, we adjourn as planning commission. Do we move along with our agenda? Is there any other discussion? No? Okay, so at this time, our planning commission will adjourn. So move, do we have to make a motion to?
It's.
Yep, yep, so move, so move.
Yeah.
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna yell, adjourn, so now I'll take a motion to adjourn our public hearing on the land division ordinance.
So move.
Second.
I'll roll.
All right, on the motion to adjourn the public hearing of the joint of land division ordinance. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.
We will take just a short break to everybody that wants to read and then we'll start our next night.
[inaudible]
I always. If you wanna share yours now, you can, if you wanna clean them out, you can.
Alrighty, I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. Friend of yours, please, word of prayer.
Of course. Let us pray. Father God, thank you for letting us gather here this evening, thank you for this beautiful weather even nicer cooler than we'd like. Thank you for all your gifts of abundance to us, thank you for your forgiveness of sins and your son dying on the cross. In your, in your name I pray, amen.
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 Jerry?
But ladies and to the flag of the United States of America.
But ladies and.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, check your form, see if anything I snuck out.
Alright, check the form for a regular board meeting. Ms. Bechtel?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Is here.
And Mr. Turman?
Here.
We still have a court.
Alright, next will be the approval of the agenda. But I also want to amend the agenda to add closed session under A eight.
Mm-hmm.
Under.
Thirteen D.
Yeah.
A eight, what was that?
Thirteen D.
Thirteen D.
And that is. A eight.
What were you, what were you talking about?
Yeah, I know.
Uh, uh, discussion of legal counsel with legal counsel and regarding personnel.
Thank you.
So I take a motion to approve the agenda.
As amended, so approved.
As amended.
Or so moved.
Second.
Sorry.
It's alright.
Alright. Alright, on a motion to approve the agenda with adding thirteen D. Under closed A eight with discussion with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters. Requiring the provision of legal advice but su- by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body. Is in attendance or is consulting on a matter and this is um with the definition under personnel. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtel?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Alright. Agenda is approved.
Next we have a approval of our dispersments, uh, anybody with over and then any question, yeah.
And and.
Comments?
I know we already talked, but make sure the what we talked about then is for community services.
Uh, let me. Let me make the phone out, community services. Let me make sure it's in here.
Part of it, we have, but you said part of it was gonna be in here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, let me just check. Yes, eighty-five, yes, it's in there. No, community services, yeah.
Which one now?
Oh no.
Convenience.
Just here.
It is not.
Do we need to stand down or? I was just searching through and I didn't see, I didn't recognize.
I think communities, the community college. We, I will. Look into it more and if I have to, I'll request, and we can kind of check right away. We put community services for me.
Is this something that can't be discussed?
It's um part of the uh quarterly payment um and questioning the timing of it. We wanted to go ahead and pay that in um. The allotted amount in full, so. We are making community services.
No, no.
He's a veteran. It's nothing new.
No, so, what?
Right.
With her and I was just talking.
Yeah. Uh, so if, if you will let me, um, it's not here, we'll look into it more. Either I'll have an answer before the meeting's over or I will follow up immediately in the morning, okay?
That's fine.
Do we want a table for now and come back or what do you wanna do?
No, we may as do this and then she can get a consensus.
Yes, I have to get a good chance of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you buy yourself anything?
I make a motion, we go approve them and authorize payments. If you're ready.
And now we'll take it.
I'll second.
Alright, on a motion to approve the dispersments as presented, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtel?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
And I will follow up with the discussion.
Next will be approval of our minutes from August the twelfth. Everybody was here on that one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, code rule.
Alright, on a motion to approve the minutes from eight twelve twenty twenty-five, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtel?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I called him, right?
Oh yeah.
That will.
He sent you that.
Yeah, but.
I mean, it'll be up though.
Yeah. Alright, the presentation from Chris Taylor.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me.
Good evening.
Hey.
My name's Chris Taylor and I am uh, Jerry, I'm Chris, Chris Taylor, I'm with New River Valley Community Services. I was appointed as the executive director as of March third this year, so I've had a. Can we say a long six months or just a regular six months uh in the job? Um, but I just wanted to come and say hello, I wanted to say thank you guys for the constant support that we get from Floyd County. Um, really, I'm just going around the counties so that you see us other than when it's budget time and we say, hey, could we have some money from you guys? Uh, just so you can put a name with a face and uh. We wanna just make sure that we are conveying to our communities, uh, obviously, we're one of forty CSBs in the state of Virginia, we serve whole New River Valley. So Floyd is included. Um, we just wanna reach out and say that we're a willing partner, um, I think in the past, we've gotten away from partnering with our community some. And we just wanna let you guys know that if there's anything you need from a behavioral health standpoint, um, we're willing to uh try and meet the needs of our community. I do wanna highlight a few things uh that we are doing in Floyd County. We just put out our end of the year report in fiscal year twenty-four, we served seven hundred and forty-one. Uh, residents of Floyd County, three hundred and fifty-two minors, three hundred and eighty-nine uh adults. We have a school-based clinician, so a master's level counselor, a based in every school in Floyd County. Uh, we also recently, just one month ago, uh, opened the Floyd Peer Center. A place for folks to go drop in uh who are suffering from substance use issues, mental health issues. Uh, just to kind of have a, a ear to listen to, a safe place to stay and link to services. Uh, Cheeto and I just had a meeting there right before this, uh, and they are, they've already seen thirty people through their doors in one month. Uh, they've been able to pe- link people to housing, services, uh, a lot of different things and. I would say that we have two eager folks who are willing to meet the needs of the, of the people in Floyd. So we're really excited about that project and thank you guys for your support. Um, I did bring you uh our last quarterly newsletter, so I will leave these with you guys. And uh, you guys can view them as you need, if you need more, I can send those over, um, but again, I don't wanna take up too much of your time. I like to think that I'm short-winded, but again, I just wanted to say hello, um, introduce myself. And if there's anything we can do to meet the needs of Floyd, please let us know. Do you guys have any questions for N R B C S?
Good, you didn't have Jerry on the front page, I can.
They know, they know better.
We didn't get much, many hits when we had Jerry on the front page, so we changed it up a little bit. Now, Mr. Booth is a great support for our agency, we really appreciate his time too, so.
I just wanna thank you, Chris, for coming out, I invite you back more often.
Absolutely.
I think it's important that we see your face as well as others in our community that are affecting. Um, and changing lives in our community. When I heard you say the statistic, it's almost half children and half adults, I mean, almost a fifty-fifty split.
Mm, it is.
Little bit leaning more towards adults, but not by much, um. So I, I just hope to see you again at either a day or a night meeting to tell us more about it. Tell us about statistics and whatever else you wanna share with us, but this is an important, important service to all of the New River Valley. But in particular, you know, Floyd.
Thank you, yeah, I, I think most people don't realize, some people don't even know who N R B C S is, New River Valley Community Services. Well, we have over eight hundred and twenty employees now, so we are a, a big.
Yeah.
Uh, agency in our communities and um. We do have some stats, uh, actually, in fiscal year twenty-four, we had seven hundred and sixty-four employees and thirty of them were from Floyd, so.
There you go.
We have plenty of residents of Floyd too and, in fact, most of the residents of Floyd that we employ work in Floyd.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's, it's really good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If you would, just a, not a lot, just a little overview of our Radford site and what we're working with law enforcement.
Sure.
That's still ongoing.
Absolutely, so we have a full.
So everybody's on the same page.
Absolutely, we have a full crisis continuum over at the Radford Center. We're the first C S B in the state to have a full crisis continuum, so what that means is that uh, an, a resident who's taken in under an E C O. Can be brought over to.
Could you explain what an E C O is?
Yes, I'm sorry, I am so sorry.
And a C S B, I know what they are, but they.
Yes, a C S B is a community services board.
Correct.
Um, and E C O is emergency custody order, someone who's at harm to themselves or uh others.
Thank you very much. Mm-hmm.
And it's been approved by a magistrate to take that person into custody and have them screened by a certified prescreener uh through the state of Virginia. So, um, if a, a, a resident is taken in by law enforcement, what happens with an E C O is. It, it literally takes a minimum of fourteen hours to find someone a placement, should they be ne- uh, in need of placement. So what was happening in the past is that law enforcement officers couldn't get back on the road. Uh, instead, they had to stay with that E C O in, in hospitals and many different settings. Which, again, in a small town like Floyd, if you take one or two um law enforcement officers off the road, you might not have much coverage. So what we've developed over there is what we call our C TAC facility. Um, and what you can do there is they can do a transfer of custody to Radford Sheriff's Department. We have onsite police officer, or excuse me, law enforcement officers over there. Uh, they can then take custody of that person and sit with them and oversee that E C O process. From there, we also have a twenty-three hour crisis facility, so uh, you can be admitted into there. And then also attached under the same roof, we have a crisis stabilization unit, which is called New Horizons. And people can stay there for up to twenty-one days, the average is about uh seven to thirteen days. Thank you.
No, that was perfect.
Very good.
Okay.
That was perfect, thank you.
Sure, I just wanna say.
And, and as you see, Chris.
When Jerry's done.
Chris is doing a great job and he's, he's enthusiastic.
Yeah.
He's a believer in the programs and I just wanna say thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, yeah, I've been with the agency nineteen years and I love it, so it's, it's a good feeling to wake up and love working good day.
Absolutely. I just wanna say thank you uh for all you've done and, and the work, this holding unit is a tremendous help. And it's a benefit to the people that are receiving the care there. My time as a nurse, elderly psych was one of my favorite things, so geriatric psych, so I appreciate all that you do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, Chris, thank you for what you do, um, I've got appreciation for you both on this level, for the, on the board side of things and what you guys have been doing. Then in my previous career as law enforcement, uh, over at Christiansburg Police, I was on, you know, some of, one of the first C I T.
Yes sir.
Guys and so forth, so I seen what, seen what y'all did back then and what you're doing on that side of things, for E C O and T D Os and helping people out. And um, so thank you for what you do. I got one question for you there.
Sure.
On the, on the ceremonial first pitch that you threw out, was it a fastball or a slider?
It was fastball and it was a strike.
It was a strike.
And it was a.
And I.
That's the main thing.
I asked him if I could get some time in the bullpen, but it was full of the players, so I couldn't get one outside. The guy who was catching, he was from Radford and I said, now you're gonna frame me up and make me look good, and he said, you threw a strike, so.
He didn't want.
Yeah, there you go.
No, no, it was, it was a little inside, no, he didn't. That's you, that's you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
When uh. Years ago, I was on the, when Tracy Mary Sullivan was there. Was when I got on the board, then I was on the executive committee until I got to be chairman and I turned it over, Jared in. He took over, but. I didn't realize what, what all y'all did until I got on that board. And back when I first started, y'all went six hundred and twenty-five employees. So y'all picked up what, two hundred employees since then, you know, so you're growing and. We're moving forward. In our peer center. You know, we went to the open house down there. I've known one of the girls since she was knee-high. And I mean, you couldn't ask for two. Fireballs and what you got.
After we talked about that.
They take that to heart and they're the ones that really can accomplish something. Cause they've been there.
Yes sir.
And they can know what they do and. I'm like leaving, I was in law enforcement for a good number of years. You know, them E C Os, you know, we used to sit on that and then by the time you got a T D O, you had to sit for another four hours and. You know, it, it, it really worried it back when I was working, we didn't have as many people as we got here. And sometimes county had one officer, you know, for about eight hours and then. Have to go to Petersburg or someplace like that, it was really put a burden on the sheriff's department, but. I still get a few complaints, you know, through our sheriff's department. That Radford's not taking over like they should, you know, that uh.
I'd be happy to reach out to Sheriff Craig, uh, we uh actually have met with him and there's a Chief Thomas with the fire department. About doing some training for first responders and we have some folks, some of our C I T folks not on up on doing a training for them. So I'll reach out to Sheriff Craig and see if he can give me more information about that.
I get in trouble when I bring this up, but uh, I've always advocated that in the basic trainings in the in-service schools. You need more training on dealing with people that's having a mental issue or a mental breakdown. Cause majority of the time, law enforcement is the first ones that has contact with them. And, you know, which. Through my life, I found my mother had Alzheimer's and, you know, grandmother had mental issues and stuff, so. I learned sort of how to talk to them, but a lot of young officers. You know, don't, don't realize. To them, whatever they are seeing is real, just like us talking here. And you can't bully them, you can't push them. And sometimes they don't have the compassion that uh they need to deal with them. And you just make a bad situation worse, you know.
Sure.
And uh, so that's something I wish that um, you know, they would look more training.
Actually, it was a collaboration that Mr. Booth recommended for us to do with them and that is exactly what the training will be on. Is how to recommend someone who's uh either, you know, using substances, which they're pretty well trained on.
Or um suffering from some kind of mental health, so uh hopefully, we'll be able to get that training out to those folks.
And C I T does a good job of that, but not all officers are C I T trained, so.
That was good training.
Yeah, good, good.
And then too, you know, one of my passions and Jerry feels the same way, it's, we needed mental health for it.
Look at mental health. Oh, mental health docket, yes.
Where I brought it, I didn't bring it up then.
You know, we, we really do because.
Yes.
You know, we, we got people over in the regional jail, I serve in the regional jail board. It really shouldn't be in.
Locked in there.
You know, because they're borderline.
Yep.
You know, they, they know better, but they don't have the mental capacity to. And you put them in there, if he's hardened people, they, they just learn what they wanna teach them, not what we wanna. So that's where we need a mental health court. Sorry about that, but you know. I won't beat that drum for two more years.
That's okay, man.
I won't beat it with you, hopefully.
Just like recovery court, which formerly was road court, has become a huge thing, mental health dockets are a thing.
Yes.
And, and we're starting to get involved with a couple, so uh, I'll reach out to Mr. Booth, see who I can coordinate with here in Floyd and we'll hopefully try to figure it out.
Yep, we do.
Another, another thing we've seen really good, um, we're not quite there in Floyd County yet, is uh what we call co-response. So we do have a mental health trained clinician who is riding along with law enforcement officers in certain jurisdictions.
Wow.
And it's.
Doing that in uh, Chris Murk.
We're doing it in Christiansburg.
Montgomery.
Oh, Montgomery, we're doing it uh at the two universities, uh, and in Radford.
Radford is kind of a hybrid program, but yes, we're doing that and the amount of T D Os, E C Os we've seen has uh basically dropped in half.
We, that would work good with you young people because, you know, young people scared in uniform anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when you show up in a uniform, if, if you got somebody that. And, you know, when you show up in a uniform, if, if you got somebody that, that you maybe talk to them, you just stand back and.
Yes, sir.
Let them handle the situation, it'd be a lot better, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, my, my buddy's assigned to one of the positions over at Christiansburg.
Okay.
And uh, he's loving, you know, having that condition with him.
Yeah.
He's like, man, it's the greatest thing ever.
Yeah, 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 well, absolutely.
It can defuse the whole situation, just.
Yeah.
One thing I wish we can do is, so those clinicians actually do wear vests. Uh, I wish they could wear a different color vest, some, some folks in further southwest are wearing their vests, but they have a different color than the police, so they're not identified as a police officer.
What color is your vest idea?
So like a police officer might roll up in a black vest.
Right.
They have like a, a baby blue Carolina, kind of the color of your wall, baby blue Carolina blue vest. Just to show that they are with them, but they're different, just like you're talking about.
Maybe that's, as we get into our budget, we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Cause I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
Well, if nothing else, if the gunfight took off, you would know that the guy in the baby blue should not be, probably not gonna participate with you.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Right.
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 He's gonna be behind with it.
Yeah, you.
He's gonna be behind.
In the rear of the gear.
Be on the floorboard as well, that was.
Yeah, they'll be like, man, what are you doing?
You gotta be on the floorboard, like, you kidding me?
Yeah, but, 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 you know, all kidding aside, this day and time, you don't ever know what's going.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, you never.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Danny was, you know, he was in Department of Corrections for a long time, he can tell you that, you know, there's people over there that don't need to be there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And you take somebody that's having a mental health crisis, you know, they already afraid of a uniform. And then when they see a uniform, they get afraid they're in trouble. And it just, it just causes them more anguish and.
Just escorted.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, I appreciate everything y'all do.
No problem, I will follow up on those things and uh, I'll give Mr. Booth an update and he can report to the board, or I'm happy to come back anytime, so, thanks for having me.
Come back anytime you want.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thanks so much.
And thanks for waiting.
Oh, happy to wait, no problem.
All right, we're back to another public comment, so. Is it the intent that all people attending the meeting of the Board of Resilience of Handicaps and Conditions shall have an opportunity to participate? If any person present requires any special assistance, please let the board know in order that arrangements can be made. Speakers are limited, four minutes, sharing or giving up, giving away unused time is not permitted. And the board does not respond to questions or comments made by the speakers during the public comment time. And as long as I've been saying that, I shouldn't have to read it.
It's, it's just like when you gotta read somebody, the rights, you just.
Well, you obviously heard me the first time I opened Circuit Court, so. Yeah, judge is a good need. So, floor is open on the public comment.
Mr. Whitaker, from Courthouse District.
Since you said my name, do I have to introduce myself?
Supposed to.
David Whitaker, I'm in the Honorable Jerry Booth's District.
Sheriff, you're ruining your reputation.
In spite of my handicaps, I'm gonna talk anyway. My, my concern is with the proposed convenience center site in the Wells area. Uh, I was at a meeting where the estimated uh, uh, cost of construction was somewhere in the neighborhood of one point four million dollars. And I'm just looking for transparency and wondering why information is so hard to find. Um, I know, I know you won't answer these questions, but who, who sold the property to the county? I don't understand who, who did that, how much was paid, uh, who made the choice of the property? Were there any other locations considered, considered one that's better suited, like, I mean, I drove by that today. It's one point one miles from the Carroll County line. Wouldn't, wouldn't a site that was level, unforested, and not close to a stream have been a better choice? Was anyone approached who might have been offered uh, uh, the, the property at a reduced price, just, you know, like to benefit the county? Was that, was that search ever made? Did anybody, who, who benefited, benefited financially from the transaction? Uh, there had to be a sale, there had to be some sort of a commission or something, who, who benefited from that? And, and, and then a, a big thing is how does the county intend to limit the usage to only Floyd County residents? Uh, I mean, it's one point one mile from the Carroll County line. And you're gonna say that it's only gonna be used by Floyd County residents? And, and was there any other property between the Topeka area, to me, between Topeka and the Carroll County line? You mean there was no other property besides this hilly wooded piece of property that's gonna take a lot of work to get it? I mean, usable, and I just, I just don't understand, so I'm just, questions, questions. Thank you for your kind attention.
That's it?
That's it.
Short and sweet, that's why I.
Hi, Chris.
We called a public comment period closed.
Ooh, we got Mr. Booth.
My mic.
Good evening. We talked about the Willis site last two, 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 two days ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
And y'all asked for some information and I brought it to you. You get anything to go up on that TV or?
What do you want up there?
I don't know.
Okay. I do.
All right, we got them. All right, right there is your compactor, RJ three twenty-five. We got the compactor, next page, next page, please, they get some birthday back here.
That's bigger safety in ours.
You want this?
No.
All right.
That's another picture of a compactor. Now, I went to uh, Reiner.
Right.
And looked at their site, spent some time with the two attendants. Uh, stopped there, went back to the doctor one day and went back again and uh, looked at some more of those measurements. Next page, please. There's the sizes of your compactor, roughly, um, they're smaller than what we got. I guess just as a new, they got more compacted. Uh, theirs is like twenty-two feet, this is like fourteen and a half, fifteen feet, these compacters, next one, please. Uh, there's your box that goes to the compactor, next one, please. Uh, skip that one. There's your dimensions, I think y'all all got it in compacted.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have it in there.
RJ three twenty-five is, is what's most people use. The uh, HD is a higher cost, heavier.
Heavy duty.
Heavy duty.
I don't think it's uh, be worth the money, but next page, please, it's a marathon.
Can I ask a question on those though? Stationary compactor, what is the, I know what the word stationary means.
It's bolted to the ground.
Okay.
You can't pick it up, you can't move.
All right.
What, what gets removed is the box.
Gotcha.
That's compacted.
That's kinda what I wanted to, yeah.
Yes.
I needed everybody to hear.
Next page, that's it.
What else do you wanna show?
You have the show with the layout from, from uh, Radford.
He's got it.
Not, not Radford, Reiner, thank you.
Oh.
Yes, no, I got some fancy hand drawings.
No, we got them, no.
Oh, we got them.
We have them in our packet with your pictures.
This is compacted, it goes into a roll off.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's sorta like a bay.
Like a, like a hay, old hay bower, just pack, pack, pack.
Right, exactly.
Then you just take a fork with something, just drop it over in there or it feeds it.
Whatever.
No, the uh, the residents pull up. They unload it from the car or put it out of the truck, they dump it in this big hopper. It's sixty by sixty-five, something like that. And then the attendant comes around, around with the key, puts the key in, pushes the button, it compacts.
Right.
And uh, what the attendants at uh, Reiner said, you know, it's just good that, you need somebody there.
Right.
First for safety, second, so nobody's throwing a piano in there.
Right.
Battery or something that will explode or catch, catch fire.
Right.
And then, once it gets to compaction, they call for the driver to come and get it. We do have a, did you have the film in there where they moved it?
No, not the video.
Okay. All right, anyway, there's some, um, so once that's full, they go to the second one. Now, there are just a lot sized for these compacters. It's roughly seventy feet wide and two hundred and sixteen feet long. That gives you room for pulling in or going around, coming back through, out the gate. The uh, minimum they had was eighty feet to get the truck pulled up and back up to the compactor. And they needed a bit of that, um.
Yeah, Rogers is really tight.
But what's, but what they have is two stationary compacters, two boxes. One goes out, the other goes into operation. And they, they've got so busy on Sundays that they fill both boxes in a day.
Wow.
And these boxes will hold anywhere from eleven to thirteen ton of trash, once they're compacted.
Yeah, it's a lot of trash.
And we sent you some pri- prices of last year's or year before. I got some new pricing just today, this evening, about four thirty. And, and what I got prices on is just one stationary compactor, two boxes. And this is insulation, shipping, uh. Can I pass it around? Anyway, you're looking at a total.
I'm put, I'm putting it in there right now.
Oh, okay. It's over seventy-three thousand dollars, now.
That's for the compactor and the boxes.
And two boxes.
And two boxes.
One compactor, two boxes. And ins- insulation and shipping. This company will come, yeah, we just gotta have electrical there.
I'm gonna put it.
And a concrete pad.
It's RSQ, it says RSQ.
They take care of the rest, now, with that said, we only have one phase power in Wells. Now, you can go with the one phase, if I understand everything right, and this gentleman would be happy to come to your next meeting to talk more about it if you like. Jim Martin. If you go single phase, you're only gonna get ten, ten pound of pressure, instead of fifteen.
Right, so it won't compact as much.
It won't compact as much.
Right.
And I was trying to get some pricing today of the transformer. Uh, I talked to electrician last year, whenever we looked at this again, sixteen, eighteen months ago. Uh, he thought like getting a uh, transformer to, to transfer single phase into three phase installed is around ten thousand dollars.
There it is.
Not as much as I expected.
How much?
Ten thousand.
Yeah, that's not bad.
That's from a reliable electrician company here in Floyd. So, then we went to uh, TRC and said, hey, we're looking at compactors. This is one Ra- uh, I mean, Reiner has, I don't lie, I got Radford on my mind. I said eighty by two hundred and twenty feet. And she goes, that's less than an acre. I said, yes, ma'am. And she said, I said, I think we can get by a whole lot smaller pond, she said, we don't even need a pond, and you don't even need credits.
With compactors.
No.
Well, with the size.
That's right.
Gotcha, gotcha, right, right.
Now, so, I've done some very uneducated figuring. And, do you have that, uh, what's it, three thousand?
Hold on, I've picked.
Three thousand five hundred cubic yards, so, if, you know. So instead of a three thousand truckloads, whatever it was, it would have it down to three hundred and fifty, something like that. Anyway, I did some other edu- uneducated guessing, um, so. Got a rough figure instead of just moving the dirt, just maybe getting the whole thing done. But, don't hold me to it, but I'm not, I'm just an old bald-headed man here, I ain't got the education. Like some of y'all do in college and engineers and so forth, but. I think it's around a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Hundred and sixty-five thou- thousand estimate.
Yeah, and that's not counting.
For the construction.
For the grading.
For the grading, stone.
Pacing, fence.
Just, all you gotta do is come pour the concrete with the compactor here.
Right.
Now.
Now, in these convenience centers, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
There's also the recycling.
Yeah.
And you observed that as well. Or were you just looking at the compactors?
Okay.
I see it, that's why I'm asking.
We got, we got uh, a recycled container in there.
Okay.
Now, the way they have your trash compactors, that ain't gonna work. I don't know, they, they was very friendly, they very happy, they turned us around in twelve hours. To get this to us, to get, get to y'all, so. You, 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 compactors ain't gonna work like that, in my opinion. Uh, disagree with a hundred and fifty percent because you can't drive trucks to drive, drive around, you gotta back up, pull in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's a, there's room reserved, it happens that way.
You want them like this.
So, yeah, that way you can drive cars around.
Right.
Now, you know, get an ex, get a second stationary compactor, you're looking at a thirty-four thousand dollars, a little bit more than that causing the shipping. But, we can also put, make it more like Franklin Pike, we can put.
Thirty-two, thirty-two and thirty-four?
Thirty-two green, yeah. Bring boxes in there, and still put recycling in there. Uh, there's a lot more we can do with it.
At this size.
Yes.
At that size. And this here, you know, I just, you can't, you.
Now come forward.
I ain't wanting to fight, uh, been too long with a day. Unless it might be Steve Durbin.
Wank it on.
Bring it on, he's had a long day too.
It scares me.
Just let me take off my top.
I think that, that moves right up a little bit, I played with it, you can move the compactors up and still use the same drive coming, coming around. This is double phone pitcher, it's got uh, eighteen boxes on the ends, putting the drive in back and forth.
And the compactor is still there?
No.
No, no.
I, I couldn't figure out how to print another comp.
Gotcha.
So you just put both on.
So it's either.
You got, yeah, okay.
And then here you get put up to thirty, thirty-four boxes. Yeah, along the back, along the sides, leave the space here and just, just double that number.
Is this on the same lot she was talking about, if you're gonna pack it?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, that's the, that's the same.
Okay.
Same thing there.
Just a different option.
I just kinda scaled off the boxes with, with, with scales and containers. Kinda give you the, plus figure some measurements.
So you're talking about an acre, a little more, or?
A little less.
You got, you got a slope, a little bit.
Yeah, now the slope would probably take it above an acre, push that acre.
About an acre and a quarter or something better, to get the slopes and get everything.
So we may not be looking at not doing compactors at all throughout the county, however, for this site, this may be our best use of the property, is what you're basically presenting to us tonight, correct? In a nutshell?
It's, it's fifty-fifty.
Okay.
The uh.
All right.
Right here you got a little bit of field, but up here you wanna cut it out, uh. About seventeen feet.
Okay.
So, the.
But what I was getting at was, for this, about an acre and a quarter, say acre and a half, time you slope everything, get your pants up, do everything. So, so that's still, that still leaves four acres.
Yes.
Yeah.
For other stuff, we might.
Yeah, that that's what, you know, me and Kim was talking the other day when we went to lunch and then uh. Looks like we could make a smaller one. And then keep the rest of the land for future development.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, there's always stuff coming down the pipe and you do storage or building or something like that.
Can you reduce the amount of. Leveling? How much can you reduce that? Grading?
We we could. It's gonna.
Wouldn't be worth it.
Okay.
It's gonna make it tight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially, especially with the compacters.
So you need the. Without the compacters.
If that's the factors, you can make it smaller.
And still have room for the trucks to get around?
It's uh. We'd have to go deeper.
For sites.
Because Franklin Pike is a hundred foot deep by a hundred and twenty.
I'm just thinking how mu- how can this shape be made to be most efficient with the least amount of excavation?
Only thing I, only thing I can see what you do, we can shift it this direction, put more field, less less cut.
Yeah, right. Or could it be more of a bowl shape? Instead of squares, hard hard square.
Yeah, right.
Like a cul-de-sac shape.
Well, your bowl shape's gonna take you up further here to make more cuts too.
Because you gotta lay your hand back.
Yeah.
So, so you've now looked at compacters and you've looked at the dumpsters, what is. Your feeling then for the Willis site as our curator of solid waste?
I like it.
Tell me what come first, egg or the chicken? No, the uh. It's hard to compare out.
Curator, that was good, right?
Okay, you know, the the last uh trash truck, you know, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah. Right.
Now. You still want to drive that trash truck as far as Willis.
Yeah.
At least twice a week. I think it's twice a week we pick up at Willis, Bill is Mark. And then you got the school.
Right.
Now, your row back is. About half of this trash truck.
Right. That carries the boxes to the transfer station, just kind of.
Less maintenance.
Yes, much less maintenance.
The compacters, you gotta have someone manage it.
Right.
But you can get part-time help, hopefully. But.
I mean, does this reduce some of our overhead? Yeah, so it reduce, so we may be able to redeploy individuals who are on our staff, perhaps.
Not until we get the recycling worked out.
Gotcha, okay, alright.
And that's a, that's another big hurdle.
Just thinking out of the box.
That Miss Jeanie and I have to have to have to have to jump over because I. Talking with other companies, other places, that some just recycle and it's not. I mean, I know Floyd loves to recycle, but it's not. It's costing money instead of.
It's not economically sound to do.
Perfect words, thank you.
It always has from the first day we started.
But we're required.
But we have to meet a percentage.
We have to make a percentage.
We're required to make a percentage, but we're also learning and Miss Kim has got, getting this line up to talk with TRC.
Right.
About this, I've learned that. Uh this is a great, now. Our community may be doing it, I don't know, I haven't got there yet. But there's like uh. The gentleman I talked to met this morning at their chipping, at their scale house, gave me a lot of information. That they reach out to the community, like Slaughter's and Sood Line, they compact, they build the cardboard. We can, if they'll turn that into us, we can, we can use that information. I mean, all these, all these businesses and so forth, if they were to share their information with the county. It all goes into that.
Into into our account.
Yes.
Into our recycling.
And 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 if I remember correctly, manufacturing companies, if they reuse, if they have make a, make something. And then they have waste from that that they include back into their process, that can also be counted.
Yeah. Internal recycling, right.
We're we're.
Internal recycling.
But we can count that as well.
Yeah, we're counting the lumber and pallets that, you know, the pallets that come from H and B. The scrap lumber that's thrown on the floor that we have time to pull out.
Yeah.
We got, the public is, we got a box there at the at the floor and they see that's wood, they're stopping to, and separate theirselves, some of them will, not everybody, but there's a lot of people that help out. Yeah, hoping we could count the tires because they're recycled.
Yeah.
Right.
So the Radford company that we've been using for recycling is doing okay for us? It's.
I mean. Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Right, okay.
They're taking our cardboard, our lights, our aluminum, our scrap metal.
Right. Yeah. Yep.
And they're sending the check every month.
Yeah, so there you go.
It's never lower than five thousand a month, is what we're dealing with.
Right, well, that's great. So, you know. It really is the right thing to do. Sometimes it's not. Perhaps the most sound, but it is the right thing to do, especially if we have this resource in Radford that has been.
Now, the only thing they pay for at Radford is steel, aluminum, and they are paying us for cardboard.
Right, okay.
If it's made of.
Yeah, everything, everything goes to Radford except the truck tires with the rims on them.
Right.
We give that to them, but we don't have to bring the tires back.
Right.
Or the rim.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's 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 this, what the study I need to work on is on plastics, our newspapers.
Glasses.
No, right now we're still moving the glass.
Still moving the glass, good.
Good.
Uh but it's it's that's, it's them small items that's light, it's the plastics and. And you know, the plastics and some of this recycling is so. Much manual labor and time. Uh it's something that personally, I think we need to really look at, you know, when we look at it, I'll 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 stop it.
Well, I think what, like um Mark mentioned, we have a call hopefully set up Friday.
Okay.
With TRC, um tuned for individuals, so um. We're hoping to get more enlightenment about the credits and what's necessary and how to, you know, maximize everything. So I think that'll give us some direction too.
Excellent.
But the um. If it goes to the factors, I reckon then go ahead and buy them two.
Personally.
Two, two anchored factors, that way your driver ain't killing. Anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes, drop the box.
Yeah.
Pick them the box up and drop it and put another one, I mean, you know, it's gonna easily, probably lose thirty minutes.
So that, so the total on the compactor is not just the total of seventy-three, three sixty-six, eighty-five. But it's the concrete pad, what does, what does it all amount to? I didn't do math in my head, I mean, just, we're looking at probably a hundred and twenty-five? About a hundred and twenty-five per?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, give or take, okay, so, yeah. Alright.
And we could, you know.
That was good on math in my head right there.
V-Doc's gonna require, you know, either asphalt or concrete paint coming in the driveway.
Right.
I'm assuming still a twenty-foot setback. Uh once, I need to get re, need to get V-Doc and get these.
Three hundred side distance, right.
And then um.
Yeah, three hundred for commercial, right.
I went blank. Look at Levi.
Fencing? He has that effect on people.
He does that too. Starstruck.
Anyway, oh, we can, we can leave rest of the stones, you know, just put the concrete pads in. Uh Ryder done that for years, theirs theirs is asphalt in now. Uh I was asked some other questions, uh uh. The road trailers that go to Cloyes Mountain holds, they haul about three and a half trash trucks.
Right.
If we took the roll off to Cloyes Mountain, you're looking at about two trips a day, two, two and a half hours turnaround.
Us.
Uh but uh we really need, we really, Florida County really needs to keep the. The road trailers because, you know, just the trucks is part of it, you know, we got all this construction bring that comes to the transfer floor.
Yeah.
It, you know, we still have to have that for that.
Did you ask Montgomery County, the Ryder folks, like when that truck leaves, I've never followed one. I've been behind them, do they just go to their landfill area behind the, you know, the old Horticulture Garden?
They have a transfer station like we do.
Yeah, yeah, it's over back near the Frog Pond.
That's where they go back.
Yeah, back in there where the old pork farm used to be.
Yeah, I wish I had to, wish I had the picture up, but it showed it where they pulled it, was that the right time they pulled that box out?
Right.
You got about a four by three hole that when it compact's in, they take a little tarp, it's made for it, they click it on.
Right.
And blow it out.
Right.
And then they take it, when they empty it, it's like, oh, you just got two big layers of big door that swings out.
Right.
It just dumps out.
So they put it back there at their landfill, and then they truck it to Cloyes, I would assume.
Their their transfer station.
So their transfer station and then they take it to Cloyes.
Get back to ours, yeah. I'm sorry.
Let's just get back to ours here.
Yeah, 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 I was just wondering what they did, because it doesn't make any sense to.
Trash trucks hauls around forty forty yard, forty yards and and the compa- and the uh box will haul forty forty yards.
By the time you get to extra mileage and everything else, it makes more sense for us to stay here.
Absolutely.
Use our transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to. Put a disclaimer for the people that's listening on YouTube about questions that Mr. Whittaker brought up. Just convenience centers, just what, two tents, three tents from how? From where the boxes was at now, Buffalo Mountain.
Right.
Just as a fenced area with cameras. So when our neighbors from up the road brings theirs down. We got them on camera, they can be charged and for using them. It it'd hit a cut down on a lot of the illegal trash that's coming in. You know, and uh so it'd pay for itself really.
Yeah.
It it's a little bit at a time, but it gets our, you know. And as far as the land purchase, nobody on this board had anything to do with that land purchase.
Correct.
You know. That was. Different.
And if I made the, I tell you, this is gonna have gates.
Yeah.
It's gonna be open similar hours as the one we have on Franklin Pike, so.
Yeah. Well, the cameras that we own.
And our cameras will.
They'll get put up wherever we want.
And there's no runoff for the water that's around there, you know, it's gonna be safe.
And the cameras, we're gonna find out like, oh, this week?
That's true.
Yes, this week. Look how happy, look how happy he is.
I tell you what, from what I understand, with the cameras that we got now, and they need about. As that old gunfighter said, count the hairs on his hand, you know, and, you know, so, you know, they're they're really, really.
Yeah, Danny's worked awful hard getting, getting these cameras and getting things set up and he's.
Big shout out on that one.
Yeah. So, is anything else I need to cover? Can I go home?
No.
Well, I thought it was exciting, was you just.
No, I know, it's an action, I believe you want.
Well, um I think if, if I may, um one and two under Mark, they're both action items, and they kind of, someone have to do with each other or maybe not. There's a couple of things, uh we have future convenience center sites, staff direction. Mark has put in. Bounty full of time, you know, with research, compacters, conversations, site visits, you know, and that's just for compacters. Then we're looking at different properties, well, wait, Mark, different properties, he's going out there, he's talking to people, he's engaging, he's, hold on. He's like measuring, measuring and everything else.
I know, I know, I'm just running my head.
He's still in that brown hair, I mean, full hair.
And red.
But and I, and we, and we got consensus and feedback, you know, on different ones, not enough to move forward. So I guess what I'm asking for direction, like, you know, we don't want five acres, we want one or you. And I know you can't pinpoint it directly, but I mean, and like uh Ms. Cook and Book made a comment in, one of the replies, if I remember. Not on the main road, or I'd rather it on a big road, but can we go in two miles in? Those kind of things because we're we're gonna be running around.
So, so here, here are my thoughts on this, and I, and I really, I don't lie awake at night thinking about solid waste. But I do wake up in the morning thinking about it, so I must be processing it as I sl- I swear it, that's what I do. So. I believe that the best we can do for the citizens of this county is to. Put our convenience centers in relatively the same kind of place that we have always had our convenience centers. On major thoroughfare roads. Now, that doesn't mean they have to be on Route Eight, two twenty-one, six fifteen, Daniel's Run. I'm not saying that. However, roads like Moore Road and Buffalo Mountain Road, well, you're you're getting your own nice convenience center as it is now. But you know what I'm saying, it it, I I want, I don't want people to have to go hither and yon to find out where a dumpster is. That that's my concern. I think that that the compactor issue. Can resolve for us the need for a larger amount of land for convenience centers. My my feeling is, we can probably get away with one to two acres, maybe depending on the layout of the land, an acre and a half. But it might be needed, be nice to have the two for expansion if we need it. I don't know that we're gonna need it. But the other thing that I want to bring up now in this setting. Even though we're trying to do what our DWR, the Department of Wildlife Resources have suggested we do with our bear problem, which is a problem. I don't want us to hold our citizens hostage with their trash. Because we can't find sites for these convenience centers, and I know this puts a drain on solid waste. But some of these boxes need to go back. To their places until we get five to seven convenience centers throughout this county. That's my thoughts. You don't have to respond right now, those are my thoughts.
I'll just go next if that's.
Yeah. It's a rapid fire here.
I understand that.
You thought you were going home.
But I look at, look at the area served. Just where I'm looking at, where the concentration of trash. Uh I said from the beginning when we started this, if we were gonna do this, I felt there's gonna have to be at least two in the four of y'all's districts.
Yeah.
And hopefully some of them might be close enough to help people in my district, but you know.
Well, Franklin Pike is an example.
Well, Franklin Pike's an example, Dusty Rocks is an example, if possible, and I haven't given up on that. But uh. If you look at it right now, between here and the parkway, only know one dumpster. Like out there, what is it, Fairview?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And sometimes.
And that's one dumpster.
That's one dumpster.
One dumpster.
You can get there sometimes, it depends on who parks right in front of it, but uh.
Right.
Uh.
Yeah.
So I can see some of these locations, uh. Compactor versus green boxes, I see the fifty-fifty there, if one part could be good, one part can't. But also when we're looking at this property, we also need to consider the possibility. It's just like you said up there in Willis, you know, if we go with this, there's about four acres left. I'll I'll give consideration to use since it's your district, but I have some ideas of some stuff could be used on that other four acres. And uh uh that can be put there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm talking down the road, but eventually there's gonna be some things that we're gonna have to do in that, or at least one thing I can think of, it's probably gonna have to be done on that end of the county. And uh and I'm not jumping in front of you, sir.
Right, no.
So I think as we find these locations, I I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that I want to set in stone a one acre or a two acre. I wanna see what's there, what's available, and then look at it from the standpoint, alright, looking at future needs. Is that a site that could house two things? Versus just a waste center? That's just where I'm coming from on it.
Well. With the compacters, you don't have to build big of the fence, because the buyer ain't gonna get that compactor.
If he does, he's in trouble.
Yeah, I'd look, well, I'd be like, so.
No, 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 we got camera on.
Yeah. You compact, you compact before you close and then that that.
You, you compact, you compact before you close, and then that, that, it's off as empty.
And when you compact, just leave it, leave the ram in there, and walk away.
Right.
And you keep, get by less, and you probably get by the six foot fence instead of the ten or twelve foot fence, and maybe not have to put the electrical on it.
Right. Right.
I mean, there's a lot of things that, that we can work through on this and go, but as far as the land, uh, with respect.
Yeah.
I've been looking for properties for roughly three years, and I've only found one so far that, that y'all.
Actually, me and Mark talked about a place a while ago, you know, they said, why don't we look for more land up at Willis? I actually brought the place to, you know, just in case.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But words got out, and some of the properties I see has done said, you know, they're putting restrictions on it.
And I mean, I, I get, I get that.
And raising the prices since it's the county government.
I got that, but you know, let me, let me, at this point, let me, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Well, ju- just wait a minute, no, I, I just, this is a really good point here, and I wanna talk to the citizens of these, of this county.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a problem that every single one of our citizens needs to have a place to put solid waste. And they know that the amount of money we have to spend on these is not a, you know, money tree. And so if you are in our audience, and you are watching, and you have some land, please go to Mark Bolt, you can find his number on our county website, to help us find level sites on somewhat major roads in this county so that we can put up these clean and very well-maintained convenience sites. And if you wanna see one, please go to Franklin Pike, right below the nursing home, right after you turn off of two twenty-one. And I, I truly mean this, and it's important, I'm sorry.
It is very hard to resolve this green box issue when there are deed restrictions being put on properties. Everybody wants an answer, but when our own citizens are saying, not on mine.
Not in my backyard.
You're, you're putting us up against a wall, like, and removing solu- removing solutions from the, from the, from the table.
A fence.
But you're too senior.
Thank you, Mark.
Well, you're liable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't really have too much to say on it, other than, you know, during the first, um, meeting, uh, tonight, um, a, a, a few folks had some comments, maybe about some conflicts of interest with, uh, board members being realtors. I think this is a, a good point to say, you know, I think this is where, being in the real estate industry comes back to benefit the board. And just like, just like Mark said, I mean, I can tell you, these properties aren't out there, um, for these sites.
Right.
Everybody wants a dumpster convenient close to their house, and nobody wants one right there across the house, the road from them, or they, they don't wanna give up a piece of their, uh, uh, hay ridge or hay field for this, so, um, in some respect, we about just have to take what we can get and make the best of it.
Yes, sir.
And, um, and then, you know, go with it and see what happens.
We have three dump sites or box sites in and around Green Mountain and Buffalo Mountain. We don't have any up our mountain, they driving seven, eight, nine, ten miles to come to Willis. So, you know, we gonna have to eventually look at a convenience center somewhere over in that area. But people gets mad because they have, they want them right on the road, but, you know.
Well, you know, another, another quick point too is, we like Franklin Pike site, that was a no-brainer, the county has the property, we're gonna invest money for the fencing and the, the gravel, and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, that's, that's an asset to us, but we can't go out and, uh, make these improvements to a, a privately owned site that we have the privilege of putting the boxes at.
Right, right, right.
With the chance that in the next six months to a year, someone's gonna yank it out from underneath of us, so. In order to improve the sites, we're gonna have to acquire some property, and I think that's what the board has been trying to do for the last few years.
You know, I'm running it cheaper if we got our own landfill.
So.
Y'all never talked about this back in nineteen ninety-two, Jerry.
We've been talking about it ever since I've been on the board.
And I'm not having a lot of hope that we're gonna resolve this now.
You're not gonna resolve it totally to everybody's satisfaction, and, and I have heard comments that, uh, since we took the ones out on Route eight and the ones over on Mayan End Hill, already had one farmer that had a calf killed by a bear, they're gonna eat wherever they can find, and so.
They'll take care of the parrots.
The sad news is the bird got to Simmons now.
Has it?
Yeah. I ain't got a full report on that, but can I ask a favor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think a piece of property has been sent.
I believe so, yeah.
So, as soon as you get these properties, please respond back to Ms. Kim, so we know what to do. Because there's one piece of property, it, it, it ain't gonna last. There's, there's another piece of property that.
Have you seen that one?
I think Dylan said something about, and a meeting with another piece of property, Lord willing, tomorrow.
Okay.
And if it works out, you gonna hug my neck, okay?
Good, I guess it's in the Little River District, huh?
That's encouraged.
Yeah.
So, so, but.
Yeah.
You know.
I think we all responded to the one.
We did.
Well, Kim won't just give you directions in the way out, okay, just keep up the good work and keep moving forward, what he's doing. You know, and if it ends up being a quarter or half mile off the main road.
So it's gonna happen.
Baggers can't be choosers, well, people's gonna find them boxes, I don't sure where.
Well, if it's on the gravel road, I ain't gonna bother with it, if, if it's hard top, I'm, I'm, it's, it's going out.
Well, if you cutting gravel roads out, you done cut a big chunk of this county.
But, you know, that's, that's rough.
Disagree with the lady earlier, we have more gravel roads than Loudoun County, by a long shot.
We know Loudoun County.
There's one lot that's about as flat as that paper rock there.
Right.
Nice.
So keep moving forward, keep pushing it to you guys, you guys are willing to consider, um, anywhere from one to, if it's ideal, more.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm, right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we need more than five acres, but, yeah.
Well, it depends on where it's at, what we think.
And what the price is.
Okay.
You know, one time, one time we talked about doing, and depending on the lay of the land and parking and everything else, we, we talked about it one time, doing remote, uh, additional voting places in y'all's districts.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I don't need it in mind, but, you know, as big, as big, as big as y'all's are, districts are.
It could get complicated with requirements, but, yeah.
Well, there's, you jump to, but I'm telling you, the first thing is, if you have the land, then at least that's.
Yeah, if somebody wants to sell us twelve acres at a decent price, then yeah, I don't know that we should not purchase twelve acres, I get it, right, I get it, I get it.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I guess really, as, as far as compactors, convenience centers or board of boxes, whichever one you think would be more feasible for us. You know, if you get a smaller tract of land, would the boxes really won't be accessible at, you know, with stick a compactor in there? If you get what I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would lean more to compactors than I would, I would.
Yeah, right, yeah, I think it solves our problems.
So these are action items?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so.
I mean, I don't.
You know, take a motion that Mark continued, um, his studies of his convenience center sites.
I'll, I'll move that.
And I second that.
I mean, I don't know why it needs action items, but that's fine.
Well, we're on the record.
Yeah, well, we're always on the record, really.
Because it was unclear, that's why.
Well. Right.
Well, I thought we were breaking the motion second, so.
Then it's unclear. Second.
No, Jerry, second.
Oh, checkers, please, ask for seconds.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So for, for both, if I may, for both the contin- uh, continued looking for convenience center sites, as well as utilizing that vision and moving forward with possibly compactors, getting as much information as we can.
Yep.
Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Turman.
Yes, yes.
Keep on it, Mark.
Y'all be, y'all, y'all keep eye on emails next day.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, about property.
Okay.
And then.
If mine, if mine don't load it, I'll come down here and load it.
You know, when I'll send it, I'll text you and say, yeah.
Would you like me to get a more educated cost on that Willis site?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and harder numbers on developing what you showed us.
Okay.
Yep, excellent.
Nice, run.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
See ya, goodnight.
You say thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mark.
And, and Mark, thank you for your work on the radio towers as well.
Yeah.
I know you've been covered up, but.
Uh, I didn't do this there.
Okay.
Uh, you got a hand in that.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a good night.
See ya. Run, Boris, run.
I will move on to new, new business now.
All right, so it's the proclamation, um, that's presented, let me just pull it up, please. Um, Constitution Week and the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America.
God bless.
I'm ready.
I made motion, we approve the proclamation.
Second. Yeah, but.
I'm just trying to choose a role.
Yeah, I'd, same here.
All right, on a, uh, motion to approve the proclamation of the Constitution, of Constitution Week and the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States, and please let me note that it's, the Constitution Week is September seventeenth through the twenty-third. Uh, Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
And Mr. Turman.
Yes.
Okay.
And you don't make sure you get one notch so she can pick it up as soon as she can there, so.
You got it, yep. Okay, um, next, um, actually, the next two are, um, from our elite attorney right here. Um, both of them are, uh, resolutions pretty much to move forward litigation with the opioid. Um, two of, the both of them are different in with regards to what the claims against, and, um, but it's also, both of them are just moving forward with, um, outside counsel to, uh, I mean, uh, directing county attorney and or outside counsel to execute the documents. Does that wrap it up?
Yeah, to paraphrase Senator Dirksen, you know, billion here, a billion there, sooner or later talking real money.
Senator Dirksen, who are you?
Real money, don't.
Who are you two?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. Uh, the, um, you all had previously voted to approve the, um, Purdue Pharma settlement that included a release of the Sackler family, was more limited in scope than what's before you tonight. Uh, that one was four and a half billion dollars for the nationwide settlement. Um, this one is more like six and a half billion dollars. Your opioid litigation council have had numerous conversations with them, they do recommend, um, accepting this settlement and authorizing your legal counsel, either them or myself, to sign all necessary documents, um, to finalize that. Uh, the, the settlement funds will be distributed the same way all your other opioid settlements will be, or have been, um, distributed. It's, some of it will come directly to you through, uh, the, um, the fiscal agent for the settlements. Some of it will go to the Commonwealth, some of it will go to the, um, opioid abatement authority, and then flow to the county.
What kind of restrictions is on the use of this money? Is it just like before?
It's same, yes, it's, it's only for abatement of the opioid crisis.
Right.
So they're unrestricted funds.
Or prevention or.
Yeah, that, I, yeah.
That is, that association.
Prevention, it, it still falls under the bucket of, um, into the bucket of abatement, that, that's a, that's a valid use.
Right.
Anything that we put in the MOU with the, with the Commonwealth, uh, is an approved, the gold standard, anything like that is.
Right.
Um, approved, but that is what it's restricted to essentially.
How many more of these you think are coming down the Pike?
Um, a few more.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not, they're not done, um.
What, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other resolution with the, with some other man, you, you've approved a settlements with other manufacturers of opioids. This group of, uh, manufacturers, um, represents, you know, around seven hundred million dollars in the settlement. Um, your opioid litigation council thinks that is, um, a good approximation of their culpability, and so they recommend, um, approving that one as well, same restrictions will apply to both.
Right.
As far as how you spent.
Next one, you know what percentage goes to the authority? Do you recall that number, or that percentage?
I, I would have to double check that to be sure, but I thought it was, um.
That's why I'm asking, I can't remember what happened the last time, but.
Yeah. Thirty percent.
I thought it was pretty close to fifty, but.
Yeah.
Somewhere around forty, forty-five percent goes directly to the authority.
Yes, but a, a share goes to the Commonwealth, the, the smaller share, maybe twenty percent, I think. Um, then another share, maybe twenty-five, to the localities, according to their, you know, the, the share of population and.
The opioid authority gets the biggest chunk.
The opioid authority gets the biggest chunks.
That's what I thought.
Um, but that money's supposed to flow back to the localities through the authority.
Right, and I know that our local folks that are on the authority and working hard will get money for our, especially with the success stories we're already having.
Well, local, local.
Well, of, from the authority, when it gets local.
All right, but I mean, we don't have any local, we don't have any Southwest Virginia representation on the authority, the last I knew.
Not on the authority itself, as far as I'm aware.
Right, the opioid authority itself.
So the New River localities, I think have been working together.
Yes, yes, my, my question is that.
Yeah. I know, I know.
I don't have a problem with that, I got a problem with the other one, yeah.
Understood, but everybody knows where this started, so.
Well, I know.
Um, if you have, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to address them, otherwise I would, uh, recommend
Motion.
Two motions to, um, adopt the Purdue, and then, and then to adopt the manufacturer settlement resolution.
All right, I'll make that motion to adopt the Purdue, um, settlement, you want me to read all of those names? No, okay.
I think.
We'll do one resolution at a time?
Yeah, I would do one resolution at a time.
Okay.
A second.
Oh, rude.
On a, oh, okay, on a motion, you want me to read each one, the, the top part of the resolution, it's fine.
I would just read the action item, um.
All right, um, on a motion to, um, approve the resolution of Floyd County Board of Supervisors approving the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against, all right, Alvegin, Ameneal, Pykma, Endiver, Mylon, Sun, and Zytus, I spelled out if I spelled, uh, pronounced it correctly?
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry, I, I think the motion was for Purdue on this one, and that's the, that's the second one, the Sackler family.
Okay. Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry, I had them.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I had them switched.
I did a matter of order, sorry, yeah.
So, if I may, I think it's the same, okay.
Great, right. Yeah, same.
Um, on the resolution by Floyd County Board of Supervisors approving the county's participation in the, uh, proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family directing the county attorney and or outside counsel to execute the documents with regards to Purdue, Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Oh.
And Mr. Turman.
Yes.
I'm just being consistent.
Yep. Oh, make another resolution for the, uh, Floyd County Board of Supervisors approving of the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against the listed companies and their related corporate entities, and directing the county attorney and or the county's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement.
Second. All right, on the, it's a pick, um, the resolution of what Ms. Cook and Book said earlier, and I think I said even prior to her.
Resigned in twelve P.
That's right, resigned in twelve P, um, Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
No.
And Mr. Turman.
Yes.
Can I have a, I, I'd like to have a statement added, the reason I voted no is the same reason I voted no in the very beginning, is because I, I, I have no doubt these people have a responsibility, but there's a. is because I I I have no doubt these people have a responsibility, but there's a broader range of people out there that have a spr- a responsibility in prescribing this stuff that have been left untouched. And and I just thought it should have been, it should have went, I know that this is where the big money's at, but there's others responsible that it's not about the money, it's about the responsibility.
Yep.
And if that could be added to the record, I'd appreciate it.
Just moves down to closed session, right?
Yep.
Just take up five minutes.
It was
You can do the motion, you do the motion now and then take the break, that way you don't have to come back in here.
Oh yeah, we could just go.
Well
So you can take a break if you're in closed session.
Yeah, I just remember you can't discuss anything once you go, once I make this motion, you go out. I take a motion to go into closed session under two point two thirty-seven eleven A three, A five, A twenty-nine, and A eight.
So moved.
Second. Alright, on the motion to go into closed sen- session, excuse me, under two point two thirty-seven eleven A three, which is discussion and consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose. A five, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made. A twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds including interviews, bidders, um offers and discussion of terms or scope of such contract, all of which are deemed through manufacturing for title. And A eight, which is the discussion of with legal counsel um employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring legal advice that is deemed personnel, Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbook.
Yes.
Ms. Beckto.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
And Mr. Terman.
Yes.
Alrighty, I'll take the motion to come out of closed session, so.
Second. On a motion to come out of closed, Ms. Cook and Book.
A little nice sheet of paper. Um, yes.
Ms. Spectold. Yes. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Second.
Alright, on the motion to certify only discuss what went into closed session four, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Spectold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Terman?
Yes.
And now for the rest of the story.
We have more time, anybody get any final?
I'm too tired.
I said a lot before.
I'll make a public service announcement. I don't know if y'all been seeing on these, just for people out here in the county. Be extra careful with your feral cats, you rabies, uh, you actines, skunks and everything. Carroll County has had six rabies cases in the last week. One of them was a feral cat in downtown Hills.
Oh gosh.
We too close to Carroll County, right?
One more thing.
Be vigilant on that, okay?
Can I, oh, we still in more time?
Yeah, because I was starting making them.
Did we, did the sheriff ever respond on the rabies question? So definitely be extra careful.
Right.
Alrighty, I'll make this announcement for the people in the public. In accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.237-12B, notice is hereby given that the board of supervisors intends to conduct closed meeting, or meetings, at an undisclosed location at some time within the next fifteen days from today's date for the sole purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of county administrator of Ford County. So, that's that. Do we have to put that on our webpage? Or should we? I didn't ask Steve.
I'm, I'm not sure, I can find out.
Find out, do you just quit?
You got it.
Well, we could, because it's already, you just made it.
Yep. Yep.
I mean, if you guys request it, we can make it happen.
Yep, let's do it.
Okay, yes, we will.
Alright, we're going down to yours.
Alright, I'll make it very quick, already, today, Kevin, myself met, met with property owner and moving forward with, and Steve signed today, plat sign, deed sign, for the utility tower site in check. So we officially have our first one, signed, sealed, delivered. And we are actually working on, and it's in, back in Steve's lap, we're on another one.
Yep.
So, Floyd will be hosting the New River Ecosystem Leadership Team Meeting, nine, on nine seventeen, first time, for that group.
Very good.
On nine twenty-five, sheriff and the judge came up, looked at the boardroom, this room will be used as a third courtroom, from nine to one.
I'm charging him.
How much we charge? Sorry, I hit your.
Any problems with security or?
Nope, not.
Or that's law or the laws?
I think they're okay. We had a huge, we had a huge workers comp audit. That appears to be successful. I say huge just because we're working out of two systems, so it's always challenging. And courthouse security should still on target for nine one. If you see, if you go by, the signs are up.
Yep.
Very nice.
Very lovely signs.
All the doors, sign, and also the sign above our kiosk, that's there too. And then just a quick, I can do the last updates, vacations, lots of vacations going on in September, lots. So I can write on Tabitha's, we'll be out fourth to the twelfth, Mark will be out at a conference. Then he'll be on vacation fifteen through the nineteenth, Sydney's out fifteen through the nineteenth. They're not going on vacation together. Ladina the nineteenth through the twenty-sixth. August was a big, big birthday month for us, so we will be celebrating this Friday, all of us. We had four birthdays in, and another celebration in August on the eighth. Ms. Jenny Tolbert on eight eighth celebrated her three years at the county.
All righty.
My gosh, it just seems like a year.
We haven't run it off yet.
And keep coming back.
It's the same day yet.
I know where she lives.
It's the same day as that, she's five years together.
Wow. So, that's as quick as I can go.
All right.
Great. Thanks.
Would you like a motion, sir?
This man, I would.
All right, all moves that we adjourn our meeting.
Second. On a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We all said, yeah.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Spectole?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Absolutely.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Levi, do you want to stand?